I'd like to call and order this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission. Does it register, we have a roll call please?
Sure, Mayor Sagada.
Present.
Mayor Potem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Y'all please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nice to see a room full of pretty faces out there tonight. Couple of announcements, our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, August 10th, 6:00 PM here in the commission. We do have a couple of proclamations, I think we'll be honoring the 44th Army Band. First, Mr. Chavez, do yours.
Proclamation honoring the 44th Army Band. Whereas the 44th Army Band is New Mexico's own Army National Guard Band and the state's military ambassador. And whereas the 44th Army Band represents the 93rd Troop Command, the New Mexico Adjutant General and the Governor of New Mexico. And whereas the 44th Army Band roots can be traced back to 1590 and has served during significant periods in the nation's history, most notably during the World War II as the 200 Coast Artillery Band. Whereas the 44th Army Band performed to support of military, civic, and diplomatic events across the state of New Mexico. And whereas the 44th Army Band brass quintet Mariachi Adelante and the Green Chili Rocks serenaded the city of Raton several times during the 4th of July holiday weekend. Whereas the city of Raton would like to extend its appreciation to the 44th Army Band for helping make the 2021 Independence Day celebration that much more memorable. Therefore, James Neil Sagada, the mayor of Raton, on behalf of the city of Raton, thank the 44th Army Band for their special appearance. And witness thereof, he heretofore sets his hand and seal for the city of Raton to be affixed this 27th day of July 2021.
There's nobody from the Army Band. One of you guys out there on the Army Band? Nope?
Nope.
All right. Mr. Cummings? Proclamation, Raton 9, 10, and 11 year old All-Star Major League Team Month, August 2021. Whereas the Raton 9, 10, and 11 year old All-Star Major League Team coached by Matt Berry, Danny Cummings, and Buck Sanchez competed in the District 4 Major League Tournament. And whereas the Raton 9, 10, and 11 year old All-Star Major League Team went on to compete in the state Major League Tournament in Los Muertos. And whereas the Raton 9, 10, and 11 year old All-Star Major League Team competed against other All-Star Major League Teams from around the state of New Mexico. And whereas the Raton 9, 10, and 11 year old All-Star Major League Team plays a key role in Raton by promoting community spirit, leadership, sportsmanship, and encourages in sports all teams and individuals to make a commitment to excellence. And whereas the Raton 9, 10, and 11 year old All-Star Major League Team must demonstrate a commitment to teamwork, sportsmanship, and discipline. And whereas the Raton 9, 10, and 11 year old All-Star Major League Team's trip to the state tournament was a great experience for the team and they received great fan support during the tournament. Now therefore do I, James Neil Sagada Jr., mayor of the city of Raton, New Mexico hereby proclaim August 2021 as Raton 9, 10, and 11 year old All-Star Major League Team Month. In the city of Raton and surrounding communities and ask the people of our communities to express pride in these young athletes and thank them for a job well done by bringing honor to their schools and communities through their achievements. And witness thereof, I appear and to set my hand and seal because the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this 27th day of July 2021. Great job. Coaches, come on. Everybody get in here. Everybody get in here. Here we go, here's two of you guys, just one hole on one side and one on the other. There you go. All right, you got it? All right. All right. I gotta know, there's not any Yankee fans in here, is there?
No.
All right, all right. Here you go. Thank you guys, appreciate it.
We're totally proud of you guys.
Absolutely. All right, next up is committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley.
Don't feel like you guys have to stay, although this is the most exciting part of the meeting. Thank you guys.
You bet, thank you. Appreciate your guys' effort.
Good job.
Now it's gonna be empty.
Kathy? Thanks for standing. All right.
Okay, the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District met June 25th on Zoom. These are always long meetings, so I'm gonna just pick out a few highlights. The fiscal year '22 operating budget was approved. They're adding 10 temporary positions with COVID-related funding. They have 40 staff now, including two Bista volunteers. And as many of us know, Lisa Sedia retired and Christopher Madrid has filled the Community Development Director position. There is also a new AAA budget specialist. And they're looking into adding a Medicaid billing department on the AAA or the Area Agency on Aging side. We adopted the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or the SES, for the region. And outdoor recreation was a huge component of that plan for all the communities. You can find the plan posted on their website. There was some discussion about how to implement the plan in day-to-day operations and not just let it gather dust on the shelf. And also how normally those plans are really important for funding opportunities. At the end of the meeting, Senator Roberto Gonzalez gave a report on a legislative retreat he had attended on topics such as getting citizens to return to work, oil and gas revenues, cybersecurity and fraud, capital outlay reform, higher education affordability, and modernizing aviation. Our next board meeting is scheduled on August 27th in Santa Fe. The Outdoor Recreation Task Force has been keeping in touch on email. We discussed a request for the Bartlett Mesa Ranch acquisition to be added to the city's ICIP plan, which we're gonna talk about tonight. And Mr. Berry is looking at land and water conservation fund grant possibilities. Those are the grants that are somewhat small and very competitive and there's a 50% match, but it could be good. One project we identified would be further development of Roundhouse Memorial Park as a central green space for outdoor recreation and fitness. I did attend a municipal lead cannabis workshop on July 21st on Zoom, which basically went over the cannabis legislation and its impact to municipalities. And the Colfax County Senior Citizens Board met on July 22nd at the Raton Senior Center. Most of the meeting was spent going over the fiscal year '20 audit, which was approved with no material findings. And the fiscal year '21 audit will be underway soon. At the time of the meeting, there was no contract yet for fiscal year '22 with aging and long-term through the Area Agency on Aging, but that was expected shortly. But the Nutrition Services Service Intensive Program related to domestic food purchase and the Senior Employment Program contracts were approved. As of June 2021, the fiscal year-end donations were strong across the corporation. The Raton Senior Center had exceeded projections by almost $10,000. So special thanks to everyone who donated in the past year. Those donations go directly back into the same program funds and are essential to the center's functioning. The next board meeting is set for September 23rd, and I had to leave a little early, so I don't know, mayor, if you wanted to add anything, that's all I have.
We did get our contract yesterday.
Oh, good.
So we're leaving now.
You're working now.
At least we know we're gonna get paid now. Yeah. But that is pretty much it.
Okay. That's all.
Mr. Jacomo.
RFPs Memorial Library Library Board Meeting was held on July 20th, 2021, at 5:30 PM. Library Director Thadira Wright reported to the board the water damage caused by the rainy rains. She also reported on the fiscal year '21, '22 projects and the end-of-year fiscal year reporting, which is due by Monday, August 15th, to the state. As of July 1st, Governor Luhan Wirsam basically opened up the state. We are at full capacity of 50, although the library has never come close to exceeding its amount. Statistical report for March of May of 2021, donations received are zero, fines collected is $115.25, copies made are $396.49, and more is received are zero. Programs held are two, attended by six persons. Story hours held are zero. Special statistical report for March of June 2021, donations received are zero, fines collected are $140.31, copies made were $525.60, memorials received were $25. Programs held are one, attended by two persons. Story hours held are a total of three, attended by 70 persons. End of the year statistical report for 2020, '21, as follows. Donations received $17,756.79, fines collected were $1,062.24, copies made were $4,414.96, memorials received were $356.15, for a grand total for the year of $23,620.14. Programs held in the library throughout the total for the year was 44, attended by 157 persons. Story hours held are three, attended by 200. RFPs, Raton Public Service Company Board of Directors and Raton City Commission met in a special joint meeting on Tuesday, June 15th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. City Manager Scott Berry stated that the purchase power agreement was awarded to Guzman Energy LLC one week ago. Edriès, our energy consultant, was present at the telephone and went over the technical aspects of the agreement. He stated that the agreement with Guzman Energy LLC is the purchase power for a total to ten-year period for $43 per megawatt hour. A motion was made and seconded and approved by all. Raton Public Service Company Board of Directors meeting was held on June 23rd, 2021, at 5:30 PM. Robin Osborne, RFPs Office Manager and Bookkeeper, presented to and approved by the board the financial and statistical information after a review and discussion of RFPs Resolution 21-07 and RFPs Resolution 21-48, which were board approved. Raton Public Service General Manager Dave Mencino gave his report on Unit 4, runtime and line through assigned work. Dave also reported that 131 new meters have been installed for the month, making a total of 2739 new meters installed.
That's all I got from here. Thank you. Mr. Chavez?
Attended the Water Board Meeting on July 20th. Lake Malloy at this time is six inches below the spillway. The city is primarily on Malloy water at this time. And the siphon on the dam was removed. The lift station in South Raton is completed finally. The Poneo Project will be finished by the last of August. They're letting it dry out before they hook up the pipe. They pull the pipe under the stream and it's waiting to hook that up. And, well, three new men were hired with the Water Department. And one, John Armijo, retired after 25 years. And all finances were discussed and approved for the city. That's all I have, sir.
Mayor Potem?
Senator for Community Innovation. Because your bill for designs by Patricia had been submitted. She's been also working with Chief Garcia to create a land and page for Officer Bertrun along with social media ads. You're participating in Kristi McDeener's new initiative for equity and innovation in the school system and proceeding with Rollout on the online platform.
All righty. Couple things I have, one was the New Mexico Municipal Lead Cannabis Meeting, talked about going forward, you know, September 1st, most community, all community should have at least some kind of a talk of zoning ordinance in place. So that was the big discussion. Yesterday, we met with the Public Lands Commissioner, Stephanie Garcia Richards, was a very productive meeting, I thought, very informative and very enthusiastic. She said, there's not much she can do as far as us and our property, but she could definitely be an advocate for the city. And she explained some of the things that we're trying to do in Sugar Creek Canyon and the area, and she was excited to see that happening and expressed her support for that, so she will definitely put in good words for us. And I've been appointed to the Governor's ARPA Committee, trying to determine how she's gonna spend the American Relief Fund Recovery Money. Two things that were high on her list, and the only two things we really talked about at this meeting, was one broadband in rural areas and water and associated projects with water, i.e. dams, specifically dams. She was realizing there's probably at least a half a billion dollars worth of dam work that needs to be done throughout the state. She wants to see how we can get the money to places that need to be and make sure that the most important dams are taken care of first. Of course, you know, Lake Malloy is number one and number two in the state, so hopefully we'll get some funding for that. And other than that, that's all I have.
I was totally surprised that the land commissioner said that this is the first time that she had elected officials come to her meeting. And she said in all the other communities she goes to that, and she was impressed that at least the elected officials were here. So you guys did good.
We tried, don't we?
Yeah.
All right, item six. Items from citizens present. Anybody? Kathy, anything?
I'm just gonna bring your item on the agenda.
All right, thank you. Moving on, item seven, eight, deliberate an act on approval of minutes for regular meeting held on July 13th, 2021. Got a chance to look at these, I'm sure.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from July 13th.
You got a second?
Motion and second to adopt the minutes from the regular meeting of July 13th. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, deliberate an act on public celebration permits for Blue Dragonfly Brewing LLC and Colfax Ale Cellar.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet this evening, we do have several public celebration permits for approval. The Blue Dragonfly Brewing will be dispensing at an event to be held at the Schuler on August 20th. This is a Bill Fegan memorial, and the times will be from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. It'll be kinda nice, I think this'll be the first time that we've been able to use the new hospitality room in the Schuler, so I invite everybody to definitely attend to honor the memory of Bill Fegan, but also to see the new hospitality room. I think it's a nice addition to the Schuler Theater and for events such as this, and then also the Gate City coming up in a month. So the Blue Dragonfly has attached their servers list. One of the servers, they did expire, but he had a computer printout, but I didn't want it because it had some of their personal information on it, but Kathleen Hansen has been renewed. And then we've included the floor plan, which is required by alcoholic beverage control. And so it's a pretty detailed layout of the Schuler, shows the square footage of the various areas, but because we've highlighted the perimeter and also the balcony, patrons would be able to take their alcohol out of the hospitality room, it just cannot leave the building. So we've clearly identified the entrances and exits and where security would be located. So we've got that one. And then also, Blue Dragonfly will be doing another event. This is not in a city-owned facility, the Schuler is owned by the city. This particular event is the El Raton, the reopening under the new ownership. And this event is scheduled for August 20th, and it would be from 1:00 PM to 11:30 PM. We are lacking a couple items on this, but I've met with Mr. Tani, and so upon our approval this evening, he would be attaching a floor plan that he would be getting from the new owners of that building. And then they would need to also sign off on the permit as the building owner. And then he would also attach a finalized list of servers once that's been determined. In addition, we also have the Colfax Ale Cellar. These particular permits are for the Gate City Music Fest. So you'll see in your packet, we have the September 4th and 5th, which was the festivities on First Street. The Colfax Ale Cellar has included all of the necessary information with their server lists and a detailed floor plan that shows where they would be located. We will, at the next meeting, also be bringing the Palmer Brewery and the Left Turn Distilling permits for Gate City as well. So you'll see that on the floor plan, we'll have those two businesses. And this is a fenced area under a tent, and it has a controlled access and exit point with security. The additional one for Colfax Ale Cellar is for the actual Bellamy Brothers Concert that will be held the evening of September 5th. Now that will be in the Schuler Theater. And so they, once again, we've attached the floor plan for the Schuler showing that Colfax Ale will be located in the hospitality room. Is there any questions?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the celebration permits for Blue Dragonfly Brewing LLC and Colfax Ale Cellar for the outline events. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Deliberate an act on appointment of city commissioners to serve as, one, extraterritorial zoning authority board member. Oh, did I? I sure did. Sorry. Item C, deliberate an act on two board appointments to the Extraterritorial Zoning Commission. We'll do that first. All righty. We have two applicants, I believe, in our packet. Charles Hyde and Randy Madison, I believe, if I'm correct. Randy would be a reappointment and Charles is a new appointment.
Yes, that is correct. I believe both of them currently also sit on our planning and zoning boards, so this would be for the Extraterritorial Zoning Commission.
How that works is you have two appointed from the city, two appointed from the county, and then the four of them will appoint another person for that committee.
Make a motion to approve, both of them.
Okay. Motion and second to approve both applicants for the Extraterritorial Zoning Commission. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Now we can go to item D, deliberate an act on appointment of city commissioners to serve as Extraterritorial Zoning Authority Board members and commissioner liaison to Extraterritorial Zoning Commission. A little clarification on this one. The commissioner liaison to the Extraterritorial Zoning Commission really is kind of a misnomer. It really shouldn't be a commissioner, because if there is a disagreement, we have to make the decision. So it's been suggested to me that perhaps we appoint Mr. Berry to that mission. Mr. Berry does not, he would be the liaison, he doesn't have a voting right in the [inaudible]. As far as the zoning authority board members, that has always been the mayor in the past. So that, if there's any...
Are you good with that? Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't make that off.
Let's do it. The mayor and the...
And Mr. Berry.
And Mr. Berry.
Mr. Berry. So move.
Well, I am down on the [inaudible] so if you get swamped.
Okay. I will let you know.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'm sorry, who was the motion by?
I did.
Sorry about that.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Item E, deliberate an act on recommendation for distribution of coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund. We've decided we have a memo from Mr. Berry explaining a couple of things he has thought of. Mike Landy, have any?
Yes, Mayor, Commissioner. You'll recall at the last meeting, we actually approved the DFA agreement to receive and accept this funding. So the city of Raton has been awarded, and this is under the 2021 Fiscal Recovery Funds, You'll recall the last discussion, that will be distributed in two what they're calling tranches. We did receive the first trench on Friday, and so that was half of that, it was $731,000. So we have received the funds, and the second trench will not be distributed for 12 months. So we would be able to, we would be eligible to start spending the funds as long as we stay within the guidelines and the criteria. So you'll see the memo that City Manager Berry has provided, and he did put the exact amount. So we received $731,316.50. And so he's done a thorough review of the guidance, and so he is recommending, you'll see, under item number one, to address some of our coronavirus-related community needs that are currently, we have certain services that are local nonprofits, being Grow Raton, the Center for Community Innovation, and Main Street. We are recommending that each of them be awarded a $50,000 allocation. And he goes into a little bit more detail in the memo, so let's see. So he says, "In order to continue the significant contributions of these local nonprofit organizations in response to the negative COVID-19 economic impact due to limited staffing currently with Raton Municipal Government, currently we do not have our Economic Development Director, she's currently working part-time. These community partners have been essential to plan and implement some of this economic impact strategy that we've been working on." And so the three organizations that we've identified will be needed on an ongoing basis to provide unique skills and capabilities that are necessary for effective execution. And so these nonprofit organizations currently do participate actively with Mr. Berry and other city staff to develop and implement elements of the economic impact strategy. So, and they have had notable positive results, so we thank you, Kathy and Grow Raton. Anita has done an outstanding job as well. So if approved, we would bring to the commission at a future meeting some draft agreements for each organization, so it could be like a memorandum of understanding, something of that nature. So I do wanna remind you that this is federal funding, and so we know that it will be probably under a single federal audit. So when we do have our auditors present, we do have to identify all federal funds, and they kinda drill down a little bit more and have, I guess, more stringent test work when it comes to federal funds. So we definitely wanna make sure that we are spending the funds within the allowable criteria. Kathy, were you wanting to mention something about...
I just had clarification. If the commission does go this route, would it be a one-year order, or would that be for a two-year period?
You know, he did not specify, and that's not something that him and I had discussed. So are you talking $50,000 a year?
Yeah. I wasn't sure what that looked like, and I just wanted to clarify that.
I'm thinking initially, it was just a $50,000 allocation to each organization.
That's my understanding.
Yes.
Are these discussions...
But there's always, you know, room for more talk.
Yeah, if more comes our way, then we can discuss it at that time.
Absolutely.
And Madam Treasurer, I spoke earlier about how, you know, important it is for the general public to understand that these funds come to us with pretty strict guidelines, and we have to follow those guidelines. So we can wish we could spend it over here all we want, but we have to do what's listed as a criteria. So that's, it's not something we, we don't have that much discretion.
Exactly.
It's not economic revealed.
So the other item that we are recommending is the purchase of an ambulance. We are in need of a new ambulance. This particular procurement, we would probably seek something along the lines of like a GSA contract. So we would certainly have to identify the vendor and go through a formal procurement process. But according to the criteria, the recipient may use funds for emergency medical response expenses, including emergency medical transportation related to COVID-eligible uses. In working with the fire department, we have come up with an estimated cost of about $300,000 for this particular ambulance. I was told that it also has some type of UV sanitation-type system, so that would be nice and kind of falls in line with the COVID-related expenses.
Yeah, in my discussions with Scott this afternoon, this would be what they call a type-two ambulance in city use. This would not be one over the road for hauling pipe down the highway. And it does come with special equipment, the infrared lighting, so it can remain sterile at all times. So this would be a type-two. And those going down the highway would be a type-one. So this is set up more for handling stuff in town and...
Especially for things like COVID.
Anything else that comes around. Yep. So we're looking at about $450,000 of recommendations.
Yes, so the total of the two, and that is just on the ambulance, on approximate estimations.
So I will move to approve the distribution of coronavirus local fiscal.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendations from Mr. Berry for nonprofit organizations of $50,000 piece and a purchase of an ambulance of costing $300,000. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. I don't know. Public hearing, sorry. Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, ICIP, fiscal year 2023 to 2027.
Mayor and Commissioner, at the last meeting, we did have our first public hearing, just to kind of introduce the process. This is an annual process, and so in your packet, we do have last year's ICIP. The deadline to submit this year will be September 17th. So we will have a couple more public hearings, and we do encourage public input. And so anybody wishing to comment or make suggestions are welcome to contact City Hall, either through, I believe we'll post the information on the website.
Yes.
And they can call or email us with any sort of recommendations or suggestions for this year's infrastructure capital improvement plan. So it will cover the period of 2020, 2027 through, no, 2023 through 2027. So it is a five-year plan. And so Jason Phillips, our Public Works Director, will primarily be working on this, and he will meet with all of the department heads, and will try to identify needs and really work through last year's list and reprioritize if there were things that we no longer need or we've received funding for, then we can take them off. But we could certainly move certain things up as a higher priority as well. So we encourage commission input as well.
In discussions with Scotty Phillips and Jason, they both feel fairly confident that we'll get full funding for the East Runde Run Project from the DOH. So that's possibly something that could be removed. They were very strongly about that. They, not quite as strong, but they still feel fairly confident we will get some funding for the pedestrian bicycle trail, but that's still something that we want to leave in the top five.
Company air, yeah.
Any other things you guys...
I mentioned in my report, you know, that, I had actually talked to Mr. Berry this afternoon about getting Bartlet, the Bartlet Mesa acquisition on here, and that he felt that it should be highly prioritized. And I figure it's up to the staff to prioritize it, you know, or anyone has a feeling, but I'd like to see that on there.
Yeah.
Same here.
Yeah, absolutely.
I might, I want to add, I have some considerations. We have presented to the County Commission a proposal to begin development of an industrial park. We're trying to get a feasibility study funded. The county has about 226 acres, but we would also need support from the city to go forward or something like that. So I bring that to your attention tonight.
Thank you, Kathy.
The one thing, one more thing I'd like to add, the latest ports of plane study that came out also has a problem. The increase in freight traffic, and they expect, you know, about a 30% increase in travel overall. If we're able to get this in the process now, it would give us a good opportunity to have, perhaps, capture additional business that will be coming from that I-27.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. It's open for comment. We'll be having a couple more, I'm sure.
Sure.
So anyone out there who wishes to add, as Kathy has, please get a hold of us.
And the ICIP is an important tool when we go to the legislature to request money during the session. And so it is pretty much mandatory that you have your projects on your ICIP. Otherwise, they probably won't receive any sort of consideration.
Yeah, we have to now submit ICIPs for the senior centers, and they will not consider a project if you not already have ICIPs. They do want them. Very important, very important. Any other comments? All right, moving on. Item G, deliberate an act on memorandum of understanding between the city of Raton and Juvenile Justice Continuum Advisory Board.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is our annual MOU that we do with the Continuum Advisory Board that oversees the juvenile justice program. This is a program funded through CYFD. We do have a four-year contract, and we just recently approved an amendment to that contract for year two of four. So we've amended the MOU. It's pretty much still the same language, just kind of altered it with the correct agreement numbers. And then it kind of lays out with regards to the programs, because we have the Girls Circle and the Boys Council, and then we also have a restorative justice program. And so we are contracted with the Human Resource Development and also Emma Green for the restorative justice portion of those services. So the programs have started. I believe they've been pretty busy the month of July. So that is the start of the new fiscal year for this particular grant. This MOU would remain in effect through June 30 of 2022. So it is just a one-year.
All right. Any questions from our board?
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between the city and the Juvenile Justice Continuum Advisory.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Item H, deliberate an act on Resolution 2021-47, fiscal year 21, end of year budget adjustments.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet, well, actually, we gave it to you just right before the meeting, but in your packet, we do have the Raton Water Works met last week. And so they've approved their resolution for a budget adjustment, and so they've detailed that in your packet. And then I've also provided you this evening with our budget adjustment. And it's mainly line item adjustments. We do, we're, this is budget adjustment number 17. So obviously, we do at least one to two a month throughout the year, which is beneficial because we can kind of stay on top of things as we see them and review our monthly financials. But we're at the point now, it's the end of the fiscal year, so this is the final. And so we're just kind of moving monies around within each individual fund, so that when I submit the DFA budget, nothing is over budget in a particular line item. We did have to do one temporary transfer at the end of the fiscal year, and this was for the juvenile justice grant. Our June reimbursement request was for $12,088. So we did do a temporary transfer out of the general fund, and then as soon as those funds are received, we'll transfer those funds in the new fiscal year back to the general fund. I also went ahead and am requesting to delete the line item for the 30,000 for the CARES Act. That was a duplicate. We had initially put it in the general fund, and then we later found out with the CARES Act money that DFA wanted them, kind of in a dedicated fund separate from the general fund. So I do have that currently budgeted under the airport fund 300. Other than that, if we look at some of our special revenue funds, the lodgers tax actually kind of did rebound within the last three months. So we do do kind of a inter-fund transfer between the promotional fund and the non-promo fund, and we exceeded our budgeted amount on that. So I am requesting to increase those transfers. You'll recall that in the EMS fund, we did surplus a old ambulance, and that was purchased by Taos County. And so those proceeds were deposited into the EMS fund, because that was the fund where we originally purchased the equipment from. So I'm just doing a line item adjustment to recognize the revenues received for that sale of municipal property. Other than that, I think everything else is pretty self-explanatory.
All right. Any other questions, comments from our board?
Good job.
I make a motion to approve our Resolution 2021-47, fiscal year 21, end of year budget adjustment.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve fiscal year end of year budget adjustment, Resolution number 2021-47. And my board is, is it encompassing the water board adjustments?
You know, I believe since their board approved them, and that we need to take separate action on them, so...
All right. So we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-47. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. As Michael Land stated, you have Resolution Number RWW 2021-03, Budget Adjustment Resolution from Raton Water Works. Their board has approved it, and it now requires adoption from us. Travis, are there any questions or anything on that, or Mr. Rupp?
They didn't. It was, it was well talked out, and they approved it unanimously.
I approve Resolution 2021-48.
Oh, the Raton.
Or Raton Water Works.
Oh, three.
Well, oh, different. I voted for Christmas.
That's all right.
All righty. Well, I want to approve the Water Board and Utility Commission's Resolution Number RWW 2021-4.
I got through. 2020-03.
Well, then, three.
We are many in the packet.
Resolution over...
Okay.
2021-3.
All right.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number RWW 2021-03, Budget Adjustment Resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Let's see if we can, we can find what number Mayor Pro Tim wants to adopt here. Let's see if we can. All right. Item I, deliberate an act on Resolution 2021-48, approval of fiscal year 21, end of year financial reports for the city of Raton, Raton Water Works, and Raton Public Service. My board.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is the Raton Water Works and the RPS financial reports, as approved by their board. We do include them in our approving resolution, and upon approval and signature this evening, I'll also provide them with a copy of the resolution to submit to their financial analyst as well. I've also provided you with the city's financial report, and this is this one. So I apologize, we've inundated you with paperwork this evening. And my eyes are tired. I can't see real well. So this is for fiscal year ending June 30. You'll see that in the general fund, our ending cash balance will be $2,761,531.46. So that also will become our beginning cash balance for the fiscal year '22 budget. I have reconciled all of the funds, and we actually closed out a couple projects during the fiscal year, one of them being the senior center window project. And so I think that project turned out very nice. And in talking with the mayor today, we're actually going to be starting the kitchen renovation project, and the city will be the fiscal agent for those funds as well. So, and I believe that's about 167,000?
165,000.
165,000. So that'll definitely be a project that will be in the new fiscal year budget. We're in the process of completing the PAPI project. That's the precision instrumentation at the airport. And so we are in the process of scheduling the flight check, which would be probably next week sometime. And so that's kind of the final piece, and then we could close that project out as well. So I was hoping to get it done by the end of the fiscal year. And at the next meeting, City Manager Berry will give you a little bit more of an update on the Great Blocks project, which also has been completed. And we have a local film individual that's going to be preparing a video with some drone footage. So that was a Main Street-funded project, and so it is the first of its kind completed in the state of Mexico. So we look forward to that. Other than that, I think if we look at the second page of our report, you'll see that despite our concerns with the COVID, and we do know that we did see some declines in our grocery receipts throughout the year, but it wasn't as severe as we had thought that it was going to be. But we also were able to kind of work with our department heads, and we kind of delayed some expenses and monitored the budget closely. And so you'll see that our revenues collected exceed our budgeted... And so you'll see that our revenues collected exceed our budgeted expenditures for the year. So any shortfall that we did see in grocery receipts or any additional revenues, such as ambulance, because we did see a slight decrease there as well because of the COVID, we were able to offset those losses by just minimizing our expenses.
It's like tremendous city staff and all the departments for that going in work there. You know, knowing what we were heading into, and.
Right.
Overall, we came out fairly well.
So then I'm very pleased with how we ended the fiscal year and looking forward to a new fiscal year. Is there any questions on our end of year report?
We have a motion.
So moved.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021 dash 48, approval of fiscal year 21, 2021, end of year financial report for the City of Raton, Raton Water Works, and RPS. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call more on this one, if there are any, please.
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. And again, thank you all for all your hard work. Item J, deliberate an act on resolution 2021 dash 49, approval of final fiscal year 2022 budget for the City of Raton, Raton Water Works, and Raton Public Service.
Mayor and Commissioner, Raton Water Works approved their budget last week at their regular meeting, and then RPS met last night and approved their financials and budget. So we present those to you this evening for approval. The city budget, I have provided to, it's about four or five pages. I didn't provide the 200-page document yet, so maybe by next week, once I've submitted to DFA, the deadline is July 31st to submit the complete budget. I will be uploading our in-code accounting financials. They upload through a CSV file into the DFA portal, and then from there, it's kind of a consolidation of funds and a little bit different fund structure than ours. So, but once I get that all done and submitted, I will print you copies of what is submitted to DFA as well. But we do present to you this evening our final fiscal year 22 budget, and so you'll see in the general fund, we are projecting a general fund budget of $5,124,860 for FY22. We do have a requirement to maintain a 1/12 reserve, which we're probably six times that requirement right now. So the 1/12 reserve is about $427,072. So we always like to exclude that when we talk about our available cash. I've provided you with the final breakdown of the city's various revenue sources. You'll see that taxes, including the grocery receipts tax, makes up a little over 71% of the city's budget, and then we have other various rents and services, municipal court fines, licenses and permits, such as business licenses, dog tags, and then we have some other miscellaneous revenues, which would consist of our small cities assistance. And so that's always kind of the wild card, and so we, it's always an unknown, and we don't typically receive it until probably late February, early March. So other than that, I've also provided you the breakdown of the various operating budgets for all of our departments. And so we are submitting a balanced budget, and you will recall when we did the interim budget process, that we are looking to utilize some of our reserve funds for kind of those one-time expenditures, as we've discussed in the past. So we are moving forward with the Hangar project. That bid, I think it's going to go out to bid in like two weeks. And so we did actually have a bid opening today for the pavement rehabilitation at the airport, and that's for the runway 220 and the 725, I believe. So at the next commission meeting, we'll bring that to you for award to move forward with that project as well. Other than that, I would just say that it is a conservative budget. We're kind of going with the same grocery receipts that we projected last year. We are highly anticipating the online sales GRT, which will be something new this year, and so we're anxious to kind of see what Raton's distribution is going to be on that. So I think it's, it's going to be high, and so I think we were a little conservative. But if we start to see that we're collecting additional revenues that we didn't anticipate, we could certainly come to you with budget adjustments throughout the year. So as we've discussed in the past, it is kind of a living document, and probably before it's even approved by DFA, we'll have our first budget adjustment ready. So we have included, I think at an upcoming meeting, we did receive funding for another co-op project, so Jason and Scott are working on that to bring that to you probably at the next meeting. And so as I've gathered information since the interim approval, I've tried to incorporate as many of those projects as I, as I can, but I certainly will have to come back with budget adjustments later on. I apologize, normally I put together a pretty comprehensive spreadsheet for you, kind of showing all of the various changes that I made, but time kind of got away from me today. So when I do put together your budget binder, I will still prepare that and put that in your binder for you.
Any other questions, comments?
Had someone asked me how we were spending our money, and I thought, well, neither of us are welcome to look at the budget too, because, you know, that's a fair question. They can come by City Hall and look at that? Is that?
They can, and we will post it on the website once it's been submitted to DFA.
All right, any other comments?
I'm making motion to approve resolution 2021 dash 49, approval of financial, final FY22 budget for City of Raton, Raton Water Works, and Raton Public Service.
Good. All right, second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021 dash 49, for 2021, 2022 municipal budget, 110 fiscal year. Any further discussion? If you're ready, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yeah, yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Michael Ann, unless you're just dying to do it, we're going to pause off the senior management report.
I think I just have one announcement, because we've been getting some questions in our office. We will have a local election coming up on November 2nd. This is going to be a little bit different than the elections that we've held in the past for our commissioner positions. The city has opted into the new local election that will be held on November 2nd. So there is currently information posted on the Secretary of State's website regarding the candidate filing day, which will be August 24th. Candidates will no longer come to City Hall. That process will be handled entirely by the county clerk's office, and so fortunately for us, we have a highly qualified and skilled county clerk. So I know that our municipal election will be in good hands, and as additional information comes out, we can certainly share it, but I think that anybody that has questions should probably contact the county clerk's office. But like I said, the forms and the calendar, all of that is available on the Secretary of State's website. Also, Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem Schuster mentioned billboards earlier, so I just did want to let you know, I was in Santa Fe Friday, and the billboard that we recently purchased near Wagon Mound already has its new vinyls. So it looks real nice. And then there's one here on the south end of town. It's kind of a smaller one, but Patricia Duran did an excellent job with those designs. And then we have another one near Clayton, and then we're also working with another company, Linmark, at the Armex building, and I'm not sure if that vinyl is up yet, but it is being produced. So it should be, and that particular one is to direct people to downtown Raton, especially because of the road construction right now.
Cool.
So we thank Patricia for helping us with that. We had kind of a tight deadline, and she was gracious to get it done, and it has the new branding and the new logo, and so they look great.
Yes. All right. Commissioner Chatterley, anything?
No.
Commissioner Jacomo.
No.
Commissioner Chatterley.
I'll check.
Mayor Pro Tem. I would remind people, they probably need, need to stick around a sign in these two resolutions.
Yes, please.
Okay. That being said, just moving to the agenda.